Thank you. On to our appointments. Join me for the actual article revision. That is the first item. The other two items are Aqua Far Protection and signage. And those were on the town meeting warrant article in the fall. And they were approved at that time. But there was a procedural error in advertising those items. I'm sorry, in the spring of last year. There was this procedural error in advertising those. And as a result, they're being brought back exactly the same as they were proposed. With the exception of the change of the date on the Aqua Far Protection map. Because obviously, we'll make it now 2021. As a result of that procedural error. We did have to reach out and get approval from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in order to make the change to that map now. And that way, so that we were not in violation of the water system application that we had before them. The last article before you is the signage one. And as I said before, that one was also before you last year. And there was a procedural error with advertising the public hearing for that. That one was brought to us by town council as a result of some edit edits that occurred. Or some missteps, not missteps, but some issues with the actual signing of the signage application. It got mixed up a little bit, basically, when it was being put into the code book. So there were a number of nonsensical sentences that occurred. So we're just going to clean that one up.
Okay. Any questions from the select board?
On the first article, is the Conservation Commission going to weigh in on that one?
On the first article, we did have the Conservation Commission and we had the Board of Health, DPW. We all came together to go over it with Attorney Cruz. Initially, it was proposed that everything was going to be in the floodplain bylaw. That was the way Department of Conservation and Recreation had directed me to do it. But then Attorney Cruz had said to do it in a slightly different way. So we've had a number of meetings with the various department directors. And everybody concurs on the plan of action going forward.
So, good evening, everyone. So what
I'd like to call the board of the meeting of the select board.
Sorry Frank, you need to end executive session.
Okay, so we can do that now, okay?
Make a motion that we adjourn executive session and go into a regular session.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the session is adjourned. I will now open the... Okay, you'd like to open the regular session? For... Four, five, at six fifty-two? Okay. Right, we're good. We're all cleared up. Okay. You can all, uh... Join me for the, uh, pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
And states.
And I stand as a citizen of America.
To the republic. One nation, under the Constitution. Yeah, if you all please remain standing for a moment of silence. For all the men and women past and present who will protect us and our great country. And please, let's keep in mind all the help workers who are still fighting the pandemic on our behalf. Thank you very much. You can be seated if you choose. We need the motion for signing of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, in a second. To accept the warrant and sign it by via the stamp, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. John?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Uh, Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Onto our appointments. Uh, joint meeting with planning board. Okay. Let's see. Who's, is that Christine?
Yes, um, so the planning board is bringing before you, um, three articles for town meeting tonight. The first being the floodplain article, the second being the aquifer protection, and the third being related to signage. The, the first one is a new article. We had, uh, talked about doing it last, last town meeting, but it ended up being pulled by FEMA and by, um, the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So this is the first time coming before you officially. We are, uh, with the help of town council, we are recommending that Article twenty-seven be deleted in its entirety and replaced with a new Article twenty-seven. Uh, and as a result of town council's work with, um, the Department of Conservation and Recreation in order to meet all of the requirements that they have, um, have put on us this past year. Um, in addition to the FEMA changes, we're going to, um, make a recommendation to have the, um... The select board and the, the Department of Public Works, um, also, uh... Well, so the select, we would recommend that the select board add something to the general bylaw, chapter three sixty, and we're calling it three sixty-two A. And we're adding, um, language to that, that the alteration of sand dunes is prohibited wherever the conservation commission determines that such alter... Alteration would be, would increase the potential for flood damage. We are also, um, recommending that the, uh... Um, that a new chapter in that section of the general bylaws be created called floodplain management. And we want, we are requesting that that chapter be three sixty-three. Um, and that is to have, uh, DPW in the case of certain, um, instances. Review applications that may came, come in with regard to that. And then, as I said, the planning board will be doing the actual Article twenty-seven, um, revision. Uh, that is a result of FEMA updating the flood, the flood study. Um, we need to have this done prior to July sixth, twenty twenty-one. So that is why it must be done at, at spring meeting. We have a number of new maps, new map panels from FEMA which are incorporated, um, into that bylaw. There are a number of, of, uh, map panels that will stay the same, some from two thousand fourteen and some from two thousand nineteen. We also have that the map will be, um, changed as a result of those new panel, um, items. All of this information is available on the planning board website under news and announcements. So anybody can see the proposed changes in the proposed, uh, maps. In the case of the floodplain bylaw, the planning board will actually be completing its, um... Well, continue, they had issued a continuance at their last meeting and hopefully will be completing at this one, the final review, um, as, as recommended by Attorney Cruz, because we had to make some modifications in order to make the required, um, adjustments legally standard. So that's the first item. The other two items are, uh, as I said, the aquifer protection and the signage. And those were on the, the, the town meeting warrant article in the fall, and they were approved at that time. But there was a procedural error in, um, advertising those items. I'm sorry, in the spring of, of last year, there was this procedural error in advertising those. Um, and as a result, they're being brought back exactly the same as they were proposed, um, with the exception of the change of the date on the aquifer protection map. Um, because obviously we'll make it now twenty twenty-one. Um, as a result of that procedural era, uh, we did have to reach out and get, um, approval from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, um, in order to, uh, make the change to that, that map now. Um, and that we're, so that we were not in violation of the, um, of the water, uh, system application that we had before them. Uh, the last, the last article, um, before you is the signage one. And as I said before, um, that one was also before you last year, and there was a procedural error with advertising the public hearing for that. Um, that one was brought to us by town council as a result of some, um... Uh, edit, edits that occurred, um, or some, uh... Missteps, not missteps, but some, um... Some issues, some issues with the actual, uh... Signing of the, of the, the signage application, um, it got mixed up a little bit basically when it was being put into the, um, into the code book. So there were a number of nonsensical sentences that occurred, so we're just gonna clean that one up.
Okay. Any questions from the select board? John?
On, on the first article, is the conservation commission gonna weigh in on that one?
So on the first article, we did have the conservation commission, and we had the Board of Health, DPW. We all came together to go over it with Attorney Cruz. Initially, it was proposed that everything was going to be in the, um, the floodplain bylaw. Um, that was the way, uh, Department of Conservation and Recreation had, um, directed me to do it. But then Attorney Cruz had said to do it in a slightly different way. So we've had a number of meetings with the various department, uh, directors. And everybody concurs on the, on the, uh, plan of action going forward.
So, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, so... What happened is, so you guys can have a little broader understanding. Back in October, FEMA and DCR updated its model bylaw. Completely, completely overhauled how they wanted municipalities to locally regulate floodplains in order to be compliant with FEMA requirements. So, what initially last spring was going to be simply an updating of the maps, basically, has become a complete rewrite of, uh, the bylaw. And FEMA and DCR don't care if it's all in zoning. They just wanna make sure everything they have in the model bylaw is somewhere in our bylaws. And, um, they've acknowledged that, um, in a number of instances, towns have been reticent to put it all in zoning, because there's a bunch of things in there that really don't apply from a zoning perspective in terms of how you would regulate it. So some of it is gonna be in the general bylaw now that I've drafted. Everything that's either in the zoning bylaw or in the general bylaw is what is required in the model bylaw from FEMA and DCR. And additionally, is everything that was in the original draft of the zoning article that had, uh, been advertised. What's happened was some of it's being pulled out and put into the general bylaw. A lot of that revolves around what, what FEMA wants to see is that every instance where there's development of some kind in the floodplain, and development is literally any alteration of land, basically. Doesn't even have to be a structure, could be any grading, regrading, alteration of land anyway. Every single development in the floodplain has to have a review process with an application and a file, so that FEMA wants to come and see it, it exists. And they want it all to be centrally housed in a floodplain administrator, um, that is essentially coordinating among the departments, all the development that occurs, uh, within the town and the floodplain. Um, so that's what the general bylaw does. Um, so the zoning aspect of it is updating the maps, updating some of the requirements. But the general bylaw is creating that whole new regulatory structure of the floodplain administrator and the floodplain permitting, which fills in the gap when no other local permit applies. So if, um, an order of conditions doesn't apply, or building permit doesn't apply, or there's no subdivision approval, where there's no other approval process in place, the floodplain permit will exist in order to ensure that there is a review process when a development occurs in the floodplain. So, that's the purpose of the general bylaw, is to fill in that gap and ensure there's a centralized housing of data, of data and records relating to floodplain. It's, it's a, it's a new, uh, requirement, and this floodplain administrator is, the departments agree that it's gonna be the planning director who will undertake that role and responsibility. And they're essentially the point person coordinating with FEMA, uh, whenever FEMA needs anything, uh, information or action taken locally. And as Christine said, if this, these new drafts, the zoning, this bifurcation between zoning and general bylaws, DCR has signed off on it as of, uh, last Friday. Um, I did some final tweaks with them, and they're okay with the new, the language as it's finally been presented to you guys now. And, um, if DCR is okay with it, that means FEMA is okay with it, because FEMA, uh, relies upon the state agencies to ensure that there's compliance with FEMA's requirements. So, uh, assuming that these versions of this general bylaw and zoning bylaw get passed at town meeting, then, um, we are in compliance with FEMA and can continue to get our flood insurance program, um, moving forward. Um, and as Christine said, this is the deadline to do it, there is no further time to do it. So it's this town meeting, or we potentially have a problem.
Thank you for your contributions. Uh, select board, any questions or comments? Okay. Guess we're all set with that. Uh, while we're on the subject, um, I'd like to recognize Lori Miller for her service on the planning board. How many years has it been, Lori?
Thirty years.
I was gonna say thirty, I thought it was thirty.
Yeah.
I personally like to thank your service to this town, you said we've been dedicated. And I'm wondering if we could, whatever's appropriate nowadays, what we've done, a plaque or a certificate or something, uh, be created for her?
We can do that.
Thank you very much. It's, um, it's been a journey. I've enjoyed all thirty years of it, and the ten years before that, I was on various boards. Um, I will still be active, so you'll still be seeing my face every once in a while.
Yeah, if I put thirty years, and I would say, yeah, I thoroughly enjoyed the first one, it'll last, it'll be lousy or something like that, you know?
Yeah, it's all been good.
Anyone else? Sean?
I tell ya, it's hard to say, it's hard to tell, um... The impact a person has over a period of time, especially when you're working in a multi, multi-person board. But, uh, clearly, there's been an impact over the years that Lori has made along with her fellow members, uh, particularly over the last thirty years. But I think the most important thing is... When you look at the meetings that are held, and you look at the discussions of the meetings. Planning board is not on the most exciting meetings that there is. It's all technical. And anybody who sits through these technical meetings, um... Can be very tedious at times. And you wanna go like, oh, man, let, let's just get to the juice. And sometimes it's very difficult to do that. Um, but to do it twenty-six to thirty-five times a year for thirty years. That tells me and should tell everybody the type of dedication that Lori has. And I, for one, just wanted to thank Lori for her service. The town is better for you being on the board. I wish you the very best, uh, in whatever you do. More importantly, I also wish Barry the best, because now you're home more often. And I'm sure, I'm sure Barry will... Barry has the greatest demeanor of any person that I know. And I, and I know this is just gonna roll off his back like nothing. So, um, but I, it's, it's difficult to say, you don't wanna... The best thing I can do, and the best thing I can say, Lori, it's been an honor serving with you, uh, in capacity in town government. I appreciate and respect, uh, what you have done in the past, and I only wish you the best.
Thank you very much, Sean. It's, um, really been an honor to, um, serve this town and to serve with public officials like you who are all volunteers. I mean, we all got pay raises of, what, ten percent over, over a penny, zero, whatever?
Oh, 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 one percent.
You know, all those zeros.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, everyone who volunteers deserves to be thanked. It's, um, sometimes a very thankless, um, position to be in, and, um, anybody who volunteers and steps up to the plate in this town deserves a thank you. And I, I wanna thank all the board members I've worked with over the years on all the boards, who have been very helpful to the planning board and our staff. So like I said, it's, it's been a pleasure.
I'd like to say thank you, Lori. I enjoyed working with you on the planning board.
That's right. You were on with me for about a year or so, three years, whatever.
Seven years.
Oh, was it that long?
Yeah.
Oh, no wonder it's great. Now I know.
Thank you, Lori. If those seven years didn't make you commit earlier, Lori, that's, you know, there's something to say there.
That's why you're great too, John, right?
I guess I didn't make an impression upon you.
Well, thank you very much. Um, it's much appreciated being appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome, Lori, and congratulations.
So that leaves Kevin Mello as the old man of the board.
Yeah, it does.
Scary thought.
Yep, he's already got no hair, so he's, he's got no hair, so it just fits right in now.
Ripped it out.
Yep.
Okay, I wanna thank the planning board for their time, and thank you Christine for your work too. Uh, I guess, I guess we can move on to, uh, our next.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
All right, let the planning board sign off.
Thank you. Go the tiles.
Okay, boy, everybody's much bigger now. Okay, uh, second appointment scheduled for seven, it's now seven ten. Is a class-two application by Ralph's Auto Center. Ralph's gonna be there somewhere. Uh, I don't see him.
I'm assuming Mike Keigho is gonna be speaking on behalf of Ralph. He just popped up.
Okay.
Mike muted.
I, I thought, I talked to Ralph, I thought he was gonna be here.
There we go. Uh, my name is Michael Keigho, and for the record, I'm representing, uh, Mr. Maderos and his, uh, company, Ralph's Auto Center. Uh, my office is at one twenty-eight Union Street in New Bedford. And this is a, a request for a class-two used car license. Uh, the facility is, uh, located, uh, right on eight twenty-two State Road. It, um, has been a facility for used car sales. Uh, Route Six Auto in Marine had sold, uh, was selling both automobiles and boats. Uh, Route Six is now going to concentrate, uh, very much exclusively on the boats. And frankly, even that is going down quite a bit. What we have here is a facility that was already, uh, designed and approved for the sale of used cars. Uh, the current licenses for, uh, thirty-three cars, three inside. Uh, Mr. Maderos had drawn a plan up, and in that plan, he shows two rows, fifteen cars each. Um, those are thirty, and then there's three spaces in front. You'll see nine spaces in the rear. The nine spaces in the rear are for employees, customers. Those are not for car display. The facility does have a showroom, offices, and there is service available for the vehicles, all currently existing. What's planned is to paint and spruce up the facility, uh, reseal and re-stripe the paved areas. And, uh, they converted last May to brand-new LED lights. They didn't increase the lights, they just replaced the high-pressure sodium lights with a, uh, more pinpoint LED lights, and that will be readjusted. We understand that there may be some concern about foot candles on those lights going off site. We're gonna make sure they don't. The site, like I said before, has already been utilized for used car sales, so there's not planned any, uh, additions or expansions of that. Um, also, Mr. Maderos and his family have a long history in Dartmouth and in New Bedford of selling automobiles, both new and used. And, uh, they have done so without any issues regarding their license. We also note that after we clean the site up, I think it'll be an improvement to current conditions. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Michael, the plan is for the, uh, current occupant to rescind his, uh, license, or is that true?
Yes, uh, Route Six, um, Auto Marine will be Route Six Marine only. So they're, they're planning on having approximately, uh, three new and three used boats at any one time. What you see there now are primarily boats of other people that are stored there. They're gonna discontinue the storage. Once these boats go in the water next season, they're not coming back there for storage. So, um, their, their footprint will be, uh, very much smaller, and they won't be selling automobiles retail.
Okay. Any questions about?
Can I ask where, where the, where the boats will be located on the property?
Sure, that's a good question. The boats are gonna be located on the property. If you're looking at it, um, from Route Six, uh, facing the, uh, facility, they'll be on the Reed roadside behind that, uh, small building, as I call it.
The garage?
The garage, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else?
I could have a question if I could, if I could. Brian, here. The aquifer protection, uh, bylaw, uh, has, it sounds like you'd have a more intense, uh, usage there. Has that been, has that been addressed?
Well, actually, it's not any more intent than the current conditions. We just have a different operator for the used car sales. Currently, uh, Route Six Auto Marine was selling used cars and, uh, boats. That won't change, just the operator will change, and the number of vehicles will be the same. Um, we're not increasing any impervious material, um, utilizing everything that's there on-site. So there's no plans for expanding it. Uh, there's no plans for, um, any alterations other than, as I mentioned, um, they're gonna reseal and stripe the existing, uh, paved area. So that'll be clearer, uh, demarcation of laneways and places for the vehicles to be parked. And also, I mentioned a moment ago, they'll be re, readjusting or rebalancing their lighting. They're not adding new floodlights or anything of that sort. So it's pretty much gonna be a change of operator more than anything else.
So it's change of operator plus paperwork, that, that, that would be the, the, just the whole thing?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Would entertain a motion?
You should make a motion based on the current class-two licensee providing documentation that they're rescinding their license. So we don't have two class-two licenses on the same one.
Did they renew their license for twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion that we, um, approve the license requested by Ralph Maderos.
Can I, uh, interrupt?
What would you like?
Uh, I am the, the neighbor of this property, and, uh, I'd like to put my points into it.
Well, this isn't, this isn't a hearing, that's why I didn't ask.
Okay. So we can, uh, discuss anything as far as the neighbor?
I'm, I'm assuming this is the letter that you would, the email you had sent?
Yeah, we'd like to add some things to it, too. Has, has, has that been addressed, uh, those, uh, issues that I have?
I believe the, I believe, um, Attorney Keigho has, uh, taken care of the parking lot, lighting aspect of it.
How about the, uh, storm drainage problem?
Is there a problem there, or is that you're looking for, uh, the protection of, uh?
There's a problem there. Right now, uh, there's a storm drain basin in, uh, the, the parking lot itself, which is designed specifically for the parking lot, okay? And a couple of decades, well, a little over a decade ago, they had a, a building there that they destroyed or demolished. And all the runoff of that area is now going down into that storm drain, because it's all slanted down to that point, and it's overflowed. And they tried to address it by, uh, just cleaning it out, but it's way too small for that particular storm drain. They need to, uh, address that, because it's going into my property, and it ruined, uh, my backyard, basically, for the last decade.
And your property is located where?
Right in back, where the garage is.
Is that the, um... Is that the old repair where De Silver?
Yeah.
The De Silver property, what used to be the De Silver property?
That was my father-in-law.
Okay, okay. All right, got it.
Mr. Keigho? Um, uh, question regarding the parking lot. Um, you did mention early on in your presentation about what you might be doing with the, with the blacktop.
Correct.
So, um, would that mean also that they would, um, whoever would be restructuring this parking lot would take heed about that, uh, that issue?
Well, I, you know, the thing that I just heard, uh, had to do with the storm drain. What we were planning on doing was resealing and striping. I'd be somewhat reluctant to regrade anything without triggering a whole new inquiry, I believe, from various boards. But we're not gonna alter the grade. Now, if the, if the storm drain was inadequately sized, then I, that's what I believe the abutter thinks is the problem. I mean, we could certainly look at that, but, um, we'd have to get all sorts of additional permits to change it. We're certainly not gonna increase the number of, uh, square feet of impervious material, and we're not gonna pitch or alter any of the grading, so it won't go on to the abutter's property any more than it does now. But as he mentioned, this is a problem that's been going on for ten years. It's not unique to this licensee's applic, or potential licensee's appl, application. But we'll certainly have our, our contractors go and look.
Great.
Maybe something isn't working on it, because of, maybe something's broken with it. I don't know, but we'll certainly make sure that it's restored to the previously approved, uh, designations.
Yeah, and since, since, and since that problem is not being changed by this, that would be a different avenue to, to fix. Uh, and not necessarily part of this license, uh, application. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, that was, that was just, I was gonna, um, figure where, um, where, where is the storm drain located exactly, is, is the water, does the water go directly behind the garage?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I mean, how far beyond the garage, just right behind the garage, or ten, fifteen feet from the garage?
It's right in the corner.
Okay.
It's about, uh, ten feet away from my property.
Okay, cuz what I'm, what I was looking at was the, um, looking at the, the satellite picture of the, of the lot that we have in our package. And looking at the, um, the drawing of uh, what Mr. Maderas had, had, uh, looked at. It looks like behind that small building is gonna be the nine, the nine, uh, spaces for the parking lot, but that looks like that's already, um, um, has already, is an asphalt. Um, and it looks like they're doing most of the work from the small building, uh, east. So I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure if it's Maderas that has to address that, or the owners of Route Six Auto. Or Route Six Marine at that point in time, I think that has to be Route Six Marines, um, take a look at. Um, now, if my suggestion would be that if that's the case, uh, and it is Route Six Marine, I would maybe, uh, contact, um, and I would say the building department or conservation. Um, and, and make a, uh, make an inquiry as to, uh, you know, the drainage from, from that property onto your property.
Well, that, uh, parking lot that you're talking about, uh, that's where they're gonna be placing their nine cars.
Right, the nine, nine employee vehicles, yes.
So that would be involved with their territory?
Well, I don't think they're redoing it, I think they're re, just resealing, resealing the parking lot and restriping it, so there's no, there's no construction being done. Um, but that's something that can be taken a look at, I'm sure, um, Mr. Maderas is a reasonable person and I know he wants to, to do the best and make, make a good property, so I would suggest that maybe either you talk to him, or you talk to, um, uh, the building department regarding the runoff onto your property. Uh, we have, we have a new building commissioner. Uh, I'm sure he would be more than happy to, uh, to take a look at it.
Okay. Close you? What's, uh, what's pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we approve the license of um, Ralph Maderas for a class-two license located at eight twenty-two State Road, uh, with the, um, with the caveat that Route Six Auto Marine and Auto, Auto and Marine, uh, turn in their, uh, auto dealers, their, their class-two license.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further questions? David?
I certainly like to see Mr. Maderas get in the business as quick as possible, but I think that, uh, your brother wants to take a look at that, that drainage, I think it's something that, uh, he should do and, uh, it's, uh, pretty, pretty much a separate issue, but it, uh, it's a good time to do it.
Uh, I agree, but it's, this license is not contingent upon that because he hasn't changed anything.
Right.
But I agree, somebody should look at it. I agree. Mr. Go back, go back, is that okay with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote, uh, Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Ralph, uh, is all set and?
Good luck, Ralph.
Attorney Kehoe, uh, you can do that, yeah, I dropped it in and out there. Let the player with the swoop. Uh, there he is.
Yep, I see him.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're all set, Ralph.
Good luck, Ralph. Smile. There, there's a smile, there we go.
Okay. Uh, next appointment, uh, Texas Roadhouse, change in beneficial interest.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Andrew Upton for the licensee with the law firm of Upton, Conell and Devlin in Boston. Uh, this is a change of officers at the corporate headquarters in Louisville, Kentucky, there's no change to any aspect of any part of the operation in this restaurant or any Texas Roadhouse in Massachusetts. Uh, what I do need to tell you is we have filed to appoint Mr. Morgan as president and to take Mr. Taylor, who was the president, and elevate him to CEO. Uh, unfortunately, last week, after we had filed, Mr. Taylor passed away. So so we contacted the A B C C about how to keep this process moving. And they said if we filed an explanatory letter and corrected section six of the application, uh, the main qualification and the background check goes to Mr. Morgan, who's still there, and he will be the president. Uh, and he will just take on the additional title of the CEO from the fellow who's passed away. So we submitted a letter with slightly revised master files to the A B C C. We sent a copy of that letter to you, and that is what I am asking for tonight. And I'm certainly glad to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Not at all.
Okay, I'll take a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So you're all set?
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your presence. Okay. Uh, seven oh seven, we'll be on that. Uh, one-day licenses for Holy Ghost feast grounds, that'll be, uh, Holy Ghost Feast, uh, five twenty-nine, twenty-one, and a wed- and a wedding on six-five, two thousand twenty-one. And of course, this is all contingent on the governor allowing this sort of thing. Somebody here to represent, uh, Holy Ghost grounds?
Yes, I am, Jeff Costa.
Mr. Costa, welcome. Would you like to describe anything?
No, uh, like you say, everything's waiting on Governor Baker's side, but we can't wait until last minute, it's easy to kee- it's easy to cancel rather than jump forward, so that's what we're looking for. We're planning the feast on two days, uh, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and, uh, the wedding is on June fifth.
Okay. So as I said, we can approve, uh, whether it be a contingent upon the, uh, governor, so I understand your situation completely. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the, uh, Holy Ghost Feast, uh, two dates, twenty-ninth and thirtieth of May, and a wedding on six-five, two thousand twenty-one, contingent.
Second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call, John Harrow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. You're all set, Mr. Costa?
Thank you.
Just, just hope for the governor to, to help.
Write him a letter, Mr. Costa.
That, that'll help. I'll put it in Portuguese.
That'll, then they'll read it.
There you go, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, new business. Uh, police sergeant appointments, uh, Matthew Bopallen and Scott Brooks, Mr. Chief Lavec, you have the floor.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, in September, I had requested that the board, uh, approve that Officer Joe Viera be provisionally appointed to sergeant to fill a vacancy at the time. Uh, I estimated a six-to-eight-month timeframe before the new promotional list would be established. Uh, that list has now been established and I'm seeking to make a permanent appointment. Uh, additionally, Sergeant Holland Wong will be retiring at the end of next month. In preparation for his departure, I'm also seeking the appointment of a second sergeant this evening. I'd like to provide the board with a, a brief summary of qualifications of the two top candidates on the sergeant's promotional list. Uh, both have a tie ranking in first place. The first candidate is Officer Matthew Bopallen, who is a fourteen-year veteran of the department, he worked as a corrections officer for seven years prior to joining us. While working in corrections, he was part of the special operations unit and was involved in a number of highly volatile situations. He's an active member in our patrol division, has received specialized training in advanced roadside impairment detection, police motorcycle and bicycle operation, and is an FAA certified drone pilot. He's also a member of the Honor Guard and serves on the Brotherhood Board. Officer Bopallen, an associate's degree in criminal justice, and is in the process of obtaining his bachelor's degree. He's been involved in coaching youth sports in Dartmouth throughout the last twenty years. The next candidate is Detective Scott Brooks, who's a twelve-and-a-half-year veteran of the department. Prior to joining us, he worked as a police officer and matter police for three years. Detective Brooks has spent the majority of the last ten years working as a task force officer assigned to the Department of Homeland Security as part of the Boston Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. In this role, he worked beside federal investigative agencies and was involved with numerous high-level narcotics and money laundering investigations. He's been recognized by the United States Attorney's Office for his contributions to the successful outcome of many cases. Detective Brooks also serves in a leadership position as the tactical commander of our regional SWAT team. Both officers have excellent service records with the department, and without hesitation, I recommend the board promote Officer Matthew Bopallen and Detective Scott Brooks to the rank of sergeant. Thank you.
Uh, Chief, how does, how does this impact Joe Viera?
Uh, once the, uh, permanent sergeants are trained, he would revert back to his previous position.
Okay. Questions, Stanley?
Yes, um, I just want to congratulate Officer, uh, Bopallen and Officer Brooks, uh, wonderfully qualified young men. Uh, another, another wonderful pick, um, uh, chief. Wonderful pick, you, you continue to make the Dartmouth Police Department stronger every day with, with people like, uh, with the qualifications of these two young men. And, uh, I can't be more happy for you. I can't be even more happy for the two new sergeants to be and their families. But most importantly, I want you guys to be very safe and be careful. Thank you for what you do.
John?
I, I also would like to congratulate them, but I'd like to ask the, uh, chief, uh, one question. We're in turbulent times right now, do we have enough insurance to show our respect to these officers and everyone else on your force? That they don't have to worry about any types of insurance problems going forward?
Yeah, what type of insurance are you referring to?
Indemnity, y- you know, something happens to them, like, you know, they have to react to a situation real quick. And if, and if they make a judgment call, I want to be able to stand behind them with enough insurance to make sure they don't, they feel comfortable, do we? I'm just worried about sometimes you hear them defunding police and taking away insurance from some officers, I just want to make sure we're, we have that type of insurance to protect them.
Certainly, and, and I share in, in your concern, um, having that insurance. Um, as a matter of fact, you know, through, through the town, uh, we've received widespread support for our police department, I think we're very fortunate here in Dartmouth um, to have that support, I think it's a reflection on the job that the officers do day in and day out. Um, additionally, officers do go out and they purchase um, additional legal protection uh, on their own as a way to, uh, to make sure that we're protected. Because as you said, we, we do make, you know, important decisions, uh, in, in split seconds. And additionally, you know, with these particular times and what's going on, we can, we can look at what the town can offer as far as additional insurance through bargaining. Um, I think the Brotherhood would, uh, negotiate that with the town to make sure there is adequate protection for the officers.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I just want to offer my congratulations to probably one of the most ardent Patriot fans that I know, uh, besides me. And also to have a a legacy coming of, um, becoming also, I know he's been, he's been with the department for a while, but, um, it's nice to see the name Brooks back on, you know, i- in the roster, um, of the police force. Um, I know his, his father is, is extremely proud of him, but more so I know his grandparents, um, Chief and, and Mrs. B are more than, uh, extremely proud of him. And Matt, um, you know, Matt's a, Matt's a really decent guy. Um, and I, I look forward to seeing both Scott and Matt. Um, you know, it's part, part of the, uh, the sergeants and, and the hierarchy in the school, in the, uh, police department, so congratulations to both of you.
Okay, David?
Uh, Matt, I didn't know you that well, but I, I'm very impressed by your biography that, uh, read off. Congratulations to you. Uh, I go way, way back with Officer Brooks, now Sergeant Brooks, watching him play catcher in in Crapo Field, and went to school, graduated with his father, so I had a long history. So impressed. Uh, you deserve, um, you deserve it. Uh, and, uh, my best of luck, best of luck to you and, uh, congratulations really happy with you and the family for both of you, it's a pleasure, and thank you for your service.
Okay.
Like to make a motion?
Please, I was gonna ask for that, thank you.
Make, make a motion to, uh, to appoint, uh, both Matthew Bopallen and Scott Brooks to the, uh, sergeant for the Dartmouth Police Department.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Be careful.
Will do. Thank you for your support.
Okay, Chief, uh, item B, appointment to special, uh, police officer, Andrew Wheaton.
Uh, yes, sir, um, next I wanted to, uh, request, uh, that appointment, Andrew Wheaton is, uh, recently retired uh, after over twenty-five years of service with the department, um, he has requested this appointment and met all of the requirements for this position. Um, so I am requesting that the board appoint Officer, previously Officer Andrew Wheaton as a special police officer.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, that's good, that takes care of him. And Chief, you have a request for, again, for, uh, using the old police department for training. I, I purposely would like you to explain something to me because, um, the last time I was in the building, which is, I think, was probably three years ago or so. Um, I had to wear a mask because of safety concerns. And that was before pandemic, of course. Um, I, I want to be reassured that the building is safe enough for people to be occupying without hazard to themselves. Um, you know, for a building that basically has been, had been abandoned.
Certainly. Uh, last time I had made that request, uh, I, I wasn't before the board to, uh, go into any kind of detail. Um, after hearing the concerns, uh, I took some additional steps that I'll talk about. Um, so the training that I'm referring to is essentially annual training. Uh, it's normally conducted just that once per year. So, and it involves the officers for very limited periods of time while they basically run through scenarios. Uh, at that point, they could wait outside prior to the next scenario. Um, to maximize the effectiveness of this training that we do, it involves role players, scenarios, and facilities to be as realistic as possible. So as you can imagine, it can be very difficult to find suitable sites to conduct this important training. In the past, we've utilized abandoned usable buildings, including the Gidley and Cushman Schools, as well as the former Westport High School. Um, in, in order to ensure a safe training environment, um, the Board of Health Director and I recently did a walkthrough of the building. And we agreed that the upper two levels of the building could safely be used for this limited purpose. Um, we, we looked around for, you know, things to be concerned about. Uh, we, we, we were slightly concerned with the ground level floor. And we came to the agreement that we would just stay off that floor, um, go into the building, immediately go to the first or second level uh, and utilize that, like I said, for very short periods of time on an annual basis to conduct training.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the board? Uh, Mr. Harrow?
Uh, the fire department also expressed some interest in using that building, and they'll be using respirators when they go in.
I assume the police will not be using respirators?
Um, yeah, I'm not, we, we don't have respirators, but I, I'm not sure if, if they're using respirators as part of their training, cuz that is part of their equipment. Uh, or if they feel they need respirators to be in the building, so I'm, I'm not, I can't really speak on that. Um, but we, we do not have respirators.
Okay, Mr. Tattelbaum, I think your hand was up at the same time.
Yeah, I, I- I, I feel kind of bad to be in a position to even question, uh, Chris Micho because, uh, in meeting with Ryan and gave it all the best effort. Uh, just the place gives me the willies. Uh, are we using it because it's the only one available and we'll get by? Or is it really, uh, it's, it's okay and safe? Um, I, I'm not going to say I can embrace this with open arms because it, it doesn't feel really good, but uh, you guys have done your homework, but, uh, this is a tough call for me personally.
Mr. Mickelson?
Uh, Chief, you know, I was the one that spoke loudly about not using it, uh, the last time. And, and not because I don't want to support the, the Dartmouth Police Department, and you know personally, I'm probably one of your staunchest supporters. I, I just, you know, you still have to enter the building. You, you know, you have to go get in that first floor, go to the second or third. Um, again, I don't want to, I don't want to talk out of turn about whether the Board of Health Director is right or wrong. But, you know, building at any point, we could, we could tear it down. It's that, it's unsafe, it's, it's a sick building. Uh, it's one of the buildings that, you know, I would love to see the District Fire District One take that property and let the town destroy that building once and for all. And let Fire District One build a, a wonderful police station. Um, I, I like David, I, I'd love to support it. I just, um, I just get nervous. I wouldn't want one officer to come down with any kind of sickness because they entered that building. I, I feel terrible about it, of saying, I'm not saying no yet, but, and, I mean, I wish we had other choices. And apparently, uh, Brian, I guess there are none in town anyway. Um, it's, it's a tough, tough call.
Yeah, I, I personally already had a question from a constituent about this. Saying that the building was bad enough that we had to build a new one, how come they could go in and use it? So that's.
So, can I address some of those concerns?
Please do.
Okay, um, so regarding, you know, our use of the building, it, it's, it's a, it's a drastic difference between using a building for the limited purpose of annual training. Um, versus working in the building. Um, to me, that's, that's a night and day difference. Um, the building is not suitable to, for someone to work in full time. Um, regarding, you know, egress, if we go into the back entrance, there's a stairwell. Immediately upon entering the building where we could, uh, get to the first floor without really walking through any of that ground level. Um, as an alternate, we could go in the front of the building, which at that point you're right on the, the first level of the building and avoid the basement in total. Um, I share, I share the board's concerns uh, for the officer's safety, and, and certainly that's my top priority as well. Uh, which is, which is why I did take the additional step to, to walk through with Mr. Micho. Um, and get his assessment of the building to see if it was safe for the purpose we're requesting. Uh, as you know, there was Legionnaires in the building, which is related to the water system, hot water in particular. Um, the water system has been turned off. Uh, there is no hot water, there is no water. Um, we're not going to use the water or attempt to use the water. So that's, that's one major concern that's been alleviated um, just by the way we're using the building. I wish there were an alternative. Uh, if there was a better one, I, I would certainly, we would certainly utilize it. Uh, like I said, in the past, we've used different buildings as they become available. We understand it's, it's for a limited time because that building most likely will be torn down at some point. And we will once again, uh, be in search of a, a suitable building. Uh, I'm trying to weigh the importance of this training, which is very important, uh, and the need to have a, a building to do the training in with any potential risk to officers. Um, and it's, it's, it is that important to do this training. It i- it is some of the best training that we, we utilize. Um, and it is difficult to find buildings. Currently, I'm not aware of any alternatives in the area. Uh, I did mention Westport, we have gone to Westport. We partnered with other agencies for this training, um, and we, we look in those communities as well.
Hey, how about Circuit City? I mean, they're using it now, uh, temporarily.
Certainly, and that would be a, a fine building, but it's not, it's not owned by the town. And, uh, I would have to look into what type of agreements they would need, uh, potential payments to utilize the building. Uh, the other issue with a Circuit City type building is it, it doesn't necessarily have a lot of the rooms and doorways and so forth that we, we utilize in some of these other buildings for training. Uh, not saying that we couldn't utilize it, but it would certainly require um, agreements and probably payments from the town. We try to do this in a way that we're using municipal buildings.
Chief, what is the ventilation system in the old police station like? I assume there's no hot air blowing around or anything, but I'm wondering if any windows could be opened or something?
Certainly, yeah, the, the windows are operational, uh, as far as I'm aware, that the heating system has been turned off. Uh, and the building is essentially winterized, so there is no HVAC in operation. Uh, the windows could certainly be opened for ventilation. And our intent would be to open the windows prior to, uh, the officers going in there for training. Give it a little bit of time to air, air out and get some airflow.
Good idea.
Okay, David?
See, I know, uh, I assume that if you do it in the near future, you, you'll be using, uh, masks, COVID-type masks, but, uh, my, my question, and I hate to question about this, uh, Chief, because it's, I almost feel like I'm stepping out of line here, but is there a mask, not so much a respirator or mask that we could use that would be some beneficial health and protection or not, that, that, that could be readily available beyond a regular COVID-type mask?
Sure, I mean, we do have access to the N95 masks, which are, uh, better than, than the, uh, most of the masks that people have been wearing recently. Um, we could utilize the N95 type masks to get that higher level of protection while we're in the building.
Fine.
What is the board's pleasure?
I'm going to make a motion to allow the chief to use the building for training purposes.
Second, Dave.
Okay, do, while we're talking about it, do, do we need any restrictions or like windows open, masks on, things like that?
I think the chief can, can iron that out and make sure that, well, everything is taken in consideration for the, the, the health and welfare of the, uh, of the troops.
Okay.
I, I, we're only giving some reaction and slight recommendations. I, I would certainly leave the chief to input as much as possible to, uh, to protect, uh, whether it be masks or windows open or any other else he can think of.
Entirely up to the chief.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, uh, Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Chief, just please, please keep everybody safe, as I know you will anyway.
Thank you, sir. I know that was a, a difficult decision, and it was for me as well, and I appreciate your support.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Um, Item D, Assistant Harbor Master Appointments. Let's see, uh, Harbor Masters, hi Steve.
How you doing? Thank you.
The floor is yours.
I've recommended the reappointment of Charles Harland, who's been with me for over a decade. Uh, he is well qualified and certified in Reserve Intermittent Police Academy. Uh, his appointment has lapsed, uh, due to COVID, but we're asking that he be given another three-year appointment at this point and be allowed to continue serving the department, the boaters and the waterways of Dartmouth. Uh, and the second request is that we add a new Assistant Harbor Master. I think I'm more than lucky and fortunate to have Mike Wheaton, uh, interested in serving my department. I think, uh, he, he'll be an unbelievable asset to the town, to the waterways. His long career with the state police involved their marine unit investigative work. He rose to the rank of Lieutenant. He retired in good standing and now wishes to work on the waterways of Dartmouth, and I couldn't have been happier to hear that. Um, so I ask if he'd be given a three-year appointment as new Assistant Harbor Master. And that'll be a seasonal position paid out of the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
Yeah, I knew somebody outside, out there would be listening for that, uh, to see where the funding is going to come from, and I wanted to point that out, so.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions by the board?
Uh, motion to, uh, to reappoint Charles Holland and motion to appoint Michael Wheaton to the, as Assistant Harbor Masters.
Second?
Second, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself. You're all set, Steve, uh?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the time.
Sure. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Item E, Dartmouth United Outreach, Smith Mills Church, Lynn Dillies. Is she present?
Yep. She is on. I don't know if she, oh, there she is.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lynn Dillies. I am the volunteer director of the Dartmouth United Outreach. And I just wanted, um, to let you all know what we've been up to since the beginning of COVID. We started Dartmouth United Outreach as a way to help out primarily seniors with food insecurity. Um, and to help them during such a critical time in their lives when they were under quarantine and couldn't get out. So, it takes place at the Smith Mills Congregational Church. We combine efforts with a couple of other churches as well, and we formed the Dartmouth United Outreach. The acronym is DUO. We, uh, thought DUO was pretty cool because it's, it's you and us in this together, meaning duo. Uh, so we started out helping about a hundred seniors a week. And now we're up to helping between four hundred to six hundred seniors and families. Uh, we do individual deliveries once a week to seniors, um, anybody disabled, veterans, anybody in quarantine due to COVID. And we have a, what we call a grabbing go that takes place on Tuesday afternoons between three o'clock and six o'clock at the parking lot at Smith Mills Congregational Church. And we have, um, approximately between one hundred to one hundred and twenty-five cars come through. And we load up their cars with food. And we have an incredible team of volunteers that, uh, puts together all of this food. I pick up the food from, uh, Pace via the, uh, Boston Food Bank. And, uh, it's an incredible thing that we've been doing for the past year. Just wanted to let you know, it's available for anybody in need. And we're helping out primarily Dartmouth residents, but some spill over into New Bedford, Ferhaven, and Akrushina.
Sounds like a great thing you're doing.
Thank you.
You need anything specific for us, or is this just informational?
Pretty much informational at this point, Mr. Chairman. If, um, if you've been noticing those wonderful green hearts that say hope, that's part of our fundraiser. And we're, um, trying to spread hope throughout Dartmouth. And that's been our MO since the beginning. We're providing hope to people. Hope that they're going to make it through this crisis. So that's why we decided to integrate the hope into the green heart symbolizing Dartmouth.
That's great. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, thank, uh, Lynn and, and, and the people of, of the congregation for doing this. I know, uh, Martha, Martha Con Stubbs is, always sends me the information and posted on Facebook on several pages, and the word is out there. Uh, but more importantly, that if people are more interested in, in helping out, they can purchase those uh, green placards, the, the, um, the heart signs by contacting, uh, Smith Mills, um, church. Um, and they can be contacted at, uh, five oh eight nine nine four six four two two. Um, to get those signs and you can place them on your front lawn. Now would be the, the best time to get it because, uh, we won't have hopefully not worrying about snow, uh, knocking them over or having them fly somewhere else that they're not supposed to be. So, um, it's a great cause, it's a great effort, and, uh, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you so much for your support, everybody.
Wonderful job, Lynn.
Thank you. If you know of anybody in need that could use our services, please reach out to us. We're on Facebook, we have a website. And it's, um, you should stop by sometime on a Tuesday. We'll be there tomorrow, uh, even though voting is taking place at the church hall, but still, we're making it happen. We had a bunch of volunteers over there today assembling all of these boxes. We, we make up about two hundred and fifty at least boxes with all kinds of wonderful food items. We even have access to, um, usually around a hundred and fifty or so thirty-pound boxes that we distribute. It's a combination of fresh produce, meat, dairy, they're phenomenal. So, we'll be giving those out as well. So please spread the word, anybody you can think of, we're there for them.
Okay, that's, that's good information, and, uh, thank you for sorting up and continue, good luck and success with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support, everybody. Thank you a lot, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Take care.
Uh, thank you.
Let's see. Water billing and quality fax updates.
Cody is here and many others.
Hi, Cody.
Hello, how are you?
Good, always good to see you.
Yeah, you as well.
You want to, uh, steer this?
Yeah, uh, so I, I can touch on it, and then, you know, I'm sure Steve can go in more depth. So, as you know, uh, our water department, there's been a lot of interest by residents, um, you know, in billing and various aspects of our water department. Uh, and, and I know Mr. McGinnis has, we've made it a point, there's a lot of good things going on in Dartmouth. Um, our departments are, are busy and, and there's great stuff going on, so we want to make our residents aware of that. So working with Mr. McGinnis, uh, you know, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Barber, uh, and Ms. Isherwood, we put together some frequently asked questions. I worked with Steve Sullivan to get the information. Uh, and we passed that on to Liz Isherwood, who was great, and she made the information much more appealing uh, with her experience in public information. So, uh, you know, Steve can touch on it more, but the water department will be making a transition to chloramines, and that should help with some water quality, uh, issues. And, and these are just some, some good, uh, you know, good PR really to get out there and make our residents aware of some of the good stuff going on and, and answer some questions that they may have, um, and make it easily accessible. So Steve, I don't know if you want to touch on it a bit more?
Well, so everybody knows that we went online on, uh, March twenty-second, the day I came down with COVID, so I had my operators out there working their butts off to, uh, to work the system in, uh, where of course, like anything that starts up, we have, uh, little snafus. But they've taken the bull, the bull by the horns and done a great job, uh, without me being there, and I very appreciative of what they do. Uh, I, this is my first day back full time, and I was out there with them today. Uh, we're meeting with the contractor and, uh, our, uh, consultant on Wednesday to go over these little items that we're having. But, uh, things are starting to fall into place. And I believe, uh, if we continue this and do our job, uh, we'll be getting rid of the trihalomethane and halicetic acid problem that we've been having in town for many years. So I think it's a good, good thing for the town. Uh, I thank Cody for what he's done, uh, putting together some of the information. Uh, we're trying to make, uh, our organization, you know, more active towards people who don't understand their water bill. Uh, and, uh, we're just trying to get the word out, and I, I'm thankful to, you know, Sean, to, uh, putting together people for me because I don't have the staff to do what they do, so I very appreciated of it.
Thank you, Steve. Good to see you healthy again, and, uh, continued good luck with that.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions?
And so, you know, we, we'd like, i- if the board approves this, uh, you know, the Board of Public Works already, uh, approved it. So if the board ends up approving this tonight, we'll work to get this on the website, uh, tomorrow, and and this will be easily available for residents. So, you know, we hope this is some good information and everyone's aware. Uh, and it's interesting, you know, working with Steve, there was a lot that I didn't know and I learned. So I think, uh, the average resident really be impressed at, at the operation and some of the things going on over there.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask if there's going to be any place except the website or besides the website, I should say. Any other plans to spread the word? He's more so, or?
Well, post it on our website, but then also on our, uh, town's homepage, which links to our social media, so we'll go through our social media as well. You know, we'll continue to promote it.
Board of Health.
Pardon me?
How about the Board of Health on their website?
Y- yeah, so once we post it on the town's main page, the town news section, it goes all of our social media.
Okay, great.
Okay. David?
Um, we, we're posting, uh, this material, um, as far as the chloramine conversion is concerned and schedule. Uh, could you address that one?
Steve? So Steve, I think I Steve, so Steve, I think you're muted.
You're muted, Steve. There you go.
Sorry, I had to step out for a minute. My alarm was going to start, turn on, so why did I set it off? What was the question?
The schedule for the chloramine implementation.
The schedule?
Yes.
Well, it's actually online, started the 22nd of March, so we're up and active right now, so.
Any other questions, comments, Sean?
Yeah, not so much on the chloramine. I want to address the billing more so. I know right now we're at six months billing. When do we anticipate going to quarterly billings?
Well, we've been talking to Sean and to Greg that the way we read right now, we don't have the personnel to read the sections as we do. So the plan is to put together some money towards, in the CIP, to do cellular, which will make it easier for people to be able to go online quickly, efficiently, to look at their water bill and to see where their water is being used. But the way we can, we can't do it the way we're doing it now, Sean, it's very difficult. It's time-consuming still, but with the cellular, it's going to make life a lot easier for everybody. People can look at their bills when they get, when they call after, you know, when we go to quarterly, we're going to try to get those all done quickly, put them in, and start using them so people can get their bills on a regular basis, so.
I think that's important because there's been a lot of a lot of discussion about people's bills, and then how all of a sudden some of them are, you know, doubling and sometimes even tripling. And trying to get these bills, you know, not so much down, but at least the ability to pay. You know, you got people that, you know, that used to have bills that they said, you know, it used to be around a couple hundred bucks. All of a sudden, it's $800, $1,000. Understanding, you know, a lot of people are home, and there's more use in. But I think it's also very important that, you know, the town communicate as to how and when, you know, and what they're trying to do to get to quarterly billing, so that we can eliminate a lot of the angst about this. But what is also very important is making sure that the homeowner and the people, you know, try to find that, you know, to see if the system is right, and there's no leak detections. You know, there's leak detections to see if there is a leak, because some people, you know, some people said, oh, all of a sudden they found a leak, and they didn't realize how long it's been. You know, we have to give them the ability to try and find it, or at least, I know that we used to have, we have leak detection kits that were made available to residents, but there could be other ways of doing it. You know, food coloring dye in, you know, in the tanks and whatnot to help. Because that's one of the major concerns that I get is these water bills. And, you know, I try to tell people that we are looking into a quarterly system. We are looking, you know, we need to get the equipment to do so, and to get the software to do so. And, you know, personally, I would love to see quarterly. I would be ecstatic to see monthly. You know, and I know that's, if we go cellular, then, you know, quarterly is obtainable, and monthly is more than attainable at that point. So, and that also benefits the town because the revenue comes in on a regular basis versus, you know, quarterly or at least a half a year, so. And I think that's.
Can I ask Steve a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Steve, I believe there's an app out now that the customers can look at their consumption on their water meters.
We have that on our larger meters right now. We have 220-some odd meters that are on large water users. They call it Ion Water, and they can click on, and I made it available to all the large users right now. They can click on the system on a daily basis to see how much water they used the day before. So this is going to be the same technology we're moving towards residential accounts, so.
I mean, some of the cities and towns use it quite a bit now, even on the residential side.
Right, right.
I believe Fairhaven does it.
Yeah.
Mr. Barber, would you like to add anything to any of this?
Tim?
What was it?
Like to add anything to any of this discussion?
I agree with Steve 100%. The going cellular and going with the quarterly billing would help a lot of people understand their usage and be able to trace it. Right now, we can only go back 90 days. So if the usage was, you know, over 90 days ago, you know, we can't go back and figure out what the use was then. But the billing is six months, so.
Yep.
So I recommend that to go to quarterly billing and the cellular.
Yeah, I had several phone calls from constituents and emails. They didn't mention quarterly billing, but they were sure that they were being overcharged, that costs are way up.
The average, from what I've been told from multiple agencies around, that, you know, people's water bills have gone up 200% because they're home, and they're using the water. And then, of course, you know, a lot of these bills are getting, you know, half summer, half winter. So they don't see the summer half. They only see the winter half. So that's what's catching some of these, a lot of these accounts. And we go back and reread them and make sure the reader is correct on the day the meter is read. And the meters are going up incrementally to make sure that there's no bill that's going out of control, so. Try our best. Again, we're, our hands are tied because of the 90-day profile that we can only do, so.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to bless this, I guess, and put it into, put the fax into service. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved. Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Comment, comment. I think that, I think it's pretty clear that the billing is something we're going to have to be able to do down the road with the best we can to get to it. But I think this discussion just needs to be today focused on making sure that people understand how the timing has already started for chloramine, what to do about it, how to do it, where to ask questions, and focus on the fact, this is a major change in town. We need as a group to focus on the fact that it's happening, it's happening now, and not lose sight of that. The billing will come down the road whenever they're ready. This is about chloramine as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I mean, people also need to understand, New Bedford's been using it for what, like 10 years or so, something like that? Is that right?
I'm not, the decision to change is not what I'm talking about. It's the timing and the conversion. People need to know it's in place right now. It started.
Well, it was announced a while ago, but yeah, I didn't see it. That's why I was also wondering about where, how readily available the fax was going to be, that's. Especially for the real important was people with pets and dialysis and that sort of stuff, they need to understand that. But apparently, my point was apparently the best of this man is without major disruption, and that's been going on for a long time, so.
Mm-hmm.
Tim?
And can I just, excuse me, can I just say that we also, we do currently have some information on the website as well as some frequently asked questions available regarding the transformation from chlorine to chloramines. This is just an added and easier to read frequently asked question sheet.
Easy is always good. Stephen?
Yeah, and I just want to mention Liz Isherwood happily that we have someone like her stature to help out the town. And I can see her work through, and I can't thank you enough, Liz, for your cooperation and your attention to our town. Thank you.
Yep, agreed. Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Talabon?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you for the work that all.
Thanks, guys. I'm glad you're back, Steve.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm back too, believe me. It was a tough two weeks.
Yeah, well, you're looking good.
I lost 24 pounds in two weeks.
Yeah, I can see it.
Yeah, you're wasting away before our very eyes.
I know, but I want some daps.
Not too fast.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I've seen you at a restaurant, so, you know, if you can find a couple that are open, I'm sure you'll get back to where you were.
It's getting my wife right now back to health. She's, she picked up not only COVID, she picked up pneumonia, so. I'm getting her back to work, so sometime soon.
Best to your wife.
We wish her well.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you all. Thanks, Cody. Okay.
You have a good night.
You too. Okay, Brian pops up right at the right minute. Item G, resignation of Brian Hawes, the DPW. Hi, Brian. You want to say something? You're muted. You're still muted.
I just lost my internet connection and just got it back.
Oh, well, that's great timing. Except for residential places.
Yeah.
If mine goes away, I don't get any help.
Hey, I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment here to thank Sean and Greg. They're going to pay me 100% of my salary for the next 10 years.
Nice.
You're worth every penny.
Can we get that deal?
Yeah, you got it too.
It works fine.
Brian, we thank you. Thank you for your participation in the town, and hope things work out for you too.
Yep, I'll be taking it easy. Not doing much.
Yeah, that's good.
Watching the national news, getting frustrated by it. I'm catching up with you guys once in a while.
Yeah, we're always a ball to watch.
What a, what a, thank all of you for what you do for the town. That's really cool, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. We all appreciate that. We like it when somebody encourages, you know.
Yeah.
Now we need to, we need, do we need to do something for replacement? That's in our basket of tricks, right?
We'll advertise for letters of interest on the website starting tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Mickelson, please.
So Brian, don't thank us. We need to thank you. You, your family is so synonymous to the town of Dartmouth. I can't imagine, but the hours, the hundreds of hours that you personally have given to this town through good times and bad times, but you always seem to rise to the top in your suggestions and how you handle yourself and how you've made the board a better place for the town is on your, has been on your watch, and I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's been quite a ride.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian, for your service.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Definitely thank Brian for his long-term service, not only to the Board of Health, but to other endeavors that Brian has done over the past years. And, you know, I'm very fortunate to know Brian all these long-term, when I was just a kid, for all intents and purposes. And also, you know, his family and Tom, just the history, whenever you look at the history of Dartmouth, the name, there are certain names that keep popping up that have been here for a long time, and Hawes is one of them, that's for sure. So the town is fortunate to have the Hawes legacy. Brian was proud to be part of that legacy, and which I want to thank him and his family in it.
Thank you. The family would be happy to hear that. Actually, just to sit here, actually, the Paul School, your current town, current town hall was built by, designed, I guess, by the Hawes relatives. The Gidley School was a gift from my grandfather, at least it land for it. And my grandfather was a 40, for 40 years, he was the fire chief, I believe, in Smith Mills. Back in the old days, when it was tough to get around and knock what had the casino fire, I believe that was something like 1920. And the Smith Mills Fire Department rushed down there. My grandfather ran up the stairs to help put out the fire, and the stairs collapsed, but he broke his leg. He was rescued, but there've been a lot of things going on. A lot of, lot of, lot of old-time, old-time history there.
Oh, yes.
I'm going to say goodbye to everybody, and I'm going to sign off. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you very much.
Brian.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Let's see. Item H, Massot Route 6 Sidewalk Plan.
Yes, Tim Barber can speak to this, but we received notification from Mass Highway that they are planning to install sidewalks along Route 6. I included the plans in your packet. The sidewalk, the proposed sidewalk will go from Candy Apple Drive to Cross Road. You know, they realized that there's been an issue with pedestrians on Route 6. We've also installed lighting on Route 6, the town has. We've worked together with Massot to make the area safer and with our safety officers. So if Tim wants to add any information, the last I heard from Massot, they had not set a construction date, but maybe Tim knows.
No, we don't have a construction date yet. I'm 100% in favor of the sidewalks on the south side of Route 6, as well as, you know, hopefully in the future, some updates on the north side. You know, we've had some fatalities, and we've tried to get a lot of, a lot of the developers to add sidewalks as they develop properties along State Road. And Massot was not always in favor of them, but it's great to see that they're taking the initiative and going forward with this project.
Yeah.
Who's that yay?
It was upside down, but it's okay. I personally like to thank, like, Mr. McGinnis for being persistent, reminding us as a town of fixing like stop signs near the school and Route 6, so thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
Well, it's, I tell you one thing, once I saw this come across our email, it was like, wow, yay. I knew it was coming, but, you know, knowing that it's coming and knowing that it's in the file to be done, and actually seeing the documentation, it's just.
Up time.
Yeah, really.
It's almost like Christmas, and it can't help but.
That's one, that's part one of Route 6, figuring the next one is making sure that those damn grocery carts don't go rolling down Route 6.
Yeah.
You know, all that helps to build that section of town that's going to be very popular at some point. And as we, Dave Catalone and I have been talking about, all that low-hanging food along Route 6, it makes it even more affordable for people to put businesses in there. And I just hope that gets done real quick.
But the one thing I want to forewarn Mr. McGinnis is that we have a database of all the property owners along Route 6 that when it comes time, starting November 1st, that we inform them that sidewalks do have to be shoveled. Because that's the most important thing. The sidewalks are there for safety. And for these people that traverse the motels to Walmart and to Walgreens for, you know, their daily supplies, it's important that they have access. And if those sidewalks aren't shoveled in the wintertime, those people are going to walk right on Route 6. And who knows what's going to happen, and that's the most important thing. There is, and I know there's a lot of people out there that'll be more than happy to do it, but we also have a few that just absolutely don't.
Yep, that's a, that's a real good point, because it's only, the sidewalks won't be as effective as the maintenance, so.
That'll be our challenge to make sure that we secure those properties.
Well, like I said, you know, we have computer savvy as our town administrator, we have a computer savvy Michael Corville, and believe me, they can build a database and send it all out.
Great.
Yep, Tim? Yep, Tim?
I was just gonna say that I know there are some wooded areas along Route Six as well that don't have a, a commercial development on them that, that, those are the ones that we'll really have to worry about.
Well, we already know the name of that. The, the big one, that's always a problem. We know who owns that.
Probably already in the database.
Yep.
Sorry, it'll all get, it'll all get done in due time.
Yep. I mean, the fact that it's gonna be to help convenience and save lives is, is terrific. So.
Good job.
The only question that I have now, this is the most important one, is when they do, when they improve the crosswalks, specifically at Connecticut Avenue, is there going to be a device for allowing the traffic to stop so that they actually can cross? Because, you know, if you look at it, when people enter the crosswalk, generally fifty percent stop, fifty percent don't. And I'm more concerned about the fifty percent that don't on a road that is deemed fifty-five miles an hour.
Yeah.
You know, I, I would think a, a, a crosswalk similar to what is available at UMass Dartmouth, you know, for the, from the um, uh, uh, the dorms to the main campus, something, something to that effect. Um, you know, is, is something that's warranted. And I think, uh, you know, I mean, we have the crosswalks at Route Six and crossroads will have the cross at Lincoln Park, but the one on Connecticut Avenue is, is different. Um, and I think something similar to that, I think that's maybe something that um, Tim and um, the town can push with the state.
Good point. Yep.
Yeah, they do. I'm looking at the plan. They have a flashing beacon uh, at Connecticut Ave, at the crosswalk to be installed.
Okay, good.
A flashing beacon means it can be triggered by someone?
Correct.
Yeah.
Great.
There's most, it'll most likely be a push button. I know the ones on, that we installed on Slope and Road are motion activated, but, I would, I would think that this is a pushback, push button. We can't, but.
That would seem to make the most sense. Yep.
Yep.
I agree.
Good.
Any other comments on this? Nice work for everybody involved. Okay. Okay, just when you thought it was safe to go back to the water, we got another common vic license to talk about.
They seasonal business that has um, just.
They finally woke up.
So, uh.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Took the words right out of my mouth. Wait, wait, wait a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for caddy shack license. Uh, Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, I'm gonna say we're all done now, but we, you never know when we, you know.
Yeah.
I won't say anything. I used to have a much smaller list though. Okay, uh, old business, Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, Bliss Corner. So I've been in uh, contact with DEP and they've stated that they're planning a t- tentative uh, public out, update meeting uh, late spring. So they haven't set a date yet, but as soon as I have the date. Um, but they have committed to the late spring. Uh, Co- COVID nineteen, uh, no new updates. Uh, we continue to follow the governor's orders and they changed today. Um, for the vaccination, um, that's fifty-five and over and one uh, comorbidity. Um, and you know, hopefully the uh, the rates stay low or continue to decline and the governor opens uh, up, goes to four, uh, phase four, step two, uh, you know, by Memorial Day hopefully. So people can enjoy a summer, the businesses can get back to business and we can always be optimistic.
So, with so many communities in the red, it's nice to see they're still yellow and, and our numbers are dropping. So, people are doing the right thing. They're little, they're, they're, they're doing that. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, um, one of the things that has transpired, every Friday we get uh, an email and it gets sent out to social media regarding the number of cases reported in Dartmouth. And people see that there's X number of cases, new cases during the course of the week. Um, however, it appears according to the chatter I'm listening to and seeing is that the school department is reporting it in a different manner. And I think now with the most important part where school has begun slowly reopening and going into full-time, I, I know a lot of the parents out there are very concerned about uh, learning about the numbers of newly reported cases. Cause I think the school department, and I could be wrong, but the, the flavor I'm getting i- is that the school is, is keeping a running tally versus the town, which is showing new cases upon a per week basis. So I'm not sure how that's done. So I'm wondering if the COVID team can talk to the school department to see about reflecting uh, uh, maybe coming up with a better way to inform the parents of what's going on. Because this is, this is, I mean, I believe uh, elementary school kids are, are, are full-time now, middle school be shortly. And then I think after vacation, I believe um, everybody's back in. I'm not. So I, I think it's, it's, some of the parents are very angst about um, the numbers being reported. Um, and I, if, if one, if ten to twelve to fifteen to thirty people say it online, then there's more that just don't bother saying it online, but have the same questions. So.
With our health.
Alright.
Yeah, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on. Okay, we have a few minutes. Uh, information I want to remind you that tomorrow is voting day. Uh, well, those that uh, probably viewers pay attention know that already.
Yep.
So it's, I don't expect anybody to wake up and go, oh damn, it's voting day. So, but, but it's a proper to inform them anyway. So, um, if there's nothing else, then now I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I, I knew there was somebody else that wanted to leave too. It had to be. Uh, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Uh, Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And me, yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you everybody.